Lord, I pray for your spirit to be in this building and in this room, Lord, and in the hearts of your people. And Father, we thank you for the many blessings that we have. We thank you, Lord, that we are able to live in a free country and make choices for ourselves, Lord. And I pray, Lord, that they would be honoring to you. I pray for everyone in this building, Lord, that you would watch over us, watch over, keep everyone safe, help us all to do that, do our jobs the best we can, Lord. And watch over all the residents of the county of Lapeer, Father. I pray that you would bless this county, bless this state, and bless our nation, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I am looking for an approval of the agenda.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consideration of the draft minutes from the July eleventh, twenty twenty-four meeting?
I'll move approval.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, and that brings us to the distribution and review of government travel requests, grant applications, and budget amendments coming around. If anybody has any questions, just make it known. And now that brings us to our first department, our department head updates. Are there any department heads that would like to give an update this morning?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a couple of quick things. This is Jessica Frankovich. She is our new ACO. Jessica actually interned with us a few years ago while she was completing her bachelor's at MSU in animal science and agribusiness. And then she has recently been working at East Point as an ACO and also still a veterinary assistant in the Vet- um, veterinary clinic. So Vetman is still on her to do this year, so I wanted to welcome her and introduce her to all of you. Um, second thing is, just a quick update. Right now, we currently have twelve cats and thirty-five dogs in our care at the shelter. And then the other fun thing is, we have teamed up with Lapeer County Parks to do a Bark in the Park event. It's gonna be this weekend, the eleventh, from twelve through three, and we're gonna have it at General Square Park. Um, there's gonna be some raffle baskets, our adoptable dogs, hopefully some food trucks. Um, we've worked with Delaney. She's been awesome. She's helping kind of, you know, this whole event. She's been great. I do have some flyers I'm gonna hand out to you guys. Um, any questions or anything? Nope. Okay.
I'm not taking my wife to this thing.
Yes, you are.
Any other department heads that would like to give an update this morning?
Good morning. This is Spencer from Lapeer County. I would like to give folks just a bit of the update from election processing and so on. We just had the August primary election on Tuesday. Our unofficial results are printed on the county website, but I passed out a paper copy for all of you as well. It appears that we've had about a twenty-six percent turnover of voters. We always hope for many more. As we know, many, many things are decided in the August primary. But we're not, we're gonna not move on to the November general election, which is actually the, um, the final, the election of officers and so on. So we'll have different things on the November ballot with regards to like village council, school boards and so on. So just to give that a short mention, I just wanted to say a public thank you to all of our local clerks and all of the staff that helped us on election night. Uh, as you know, February presidential election, we're tasked now with providing nine days of early voting as well as all of the AV processing and then along Election Day. So all of the local clerks staffing their locations and taking care of our residents is really pretty phenomenal. So just a public thank you to them. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have about the election. I'm headed next door to begin the canvas of the election with the Board of Candisters, which will go on for several days. So at the time that they're finished with their work, that's when our election results will be switched from unofficial to official. So that's why what you see in front of you is just what I have right now, but it's not official until the Board of Candisters says it's official. So.
Theresa, um, as far as the early voting, nine days, um, do we have any percentages of, of total vote voter turnout, you know, did that in those nine days? Is there, is there a way of breaking that out?
Excellent question. What we're gonna be doing as we go through each of the precincts is actually recording day one through nine so that we can have that snapshot just on one sheet to see how many in the different jurisdictions. So what is happening in our county, we have a couple of regional sites for early voting. So Deerfield Township, for instance, really carries a lot of jurisdictions, I think six total. And now our other regional site is over at the Township of Emily, and they are handling three jurisdictions. They're all City of Emily City and now Goodland Township. So, um, that spreadsheet will have all of that broken down. We can really analyze it to see. Uh, it's not a very good turnout yet, if I may comment.
Sure, sure. I mean, and obviously, is, is nine days just too much, you know? Is it, is it, you know, would it make more sense if it were four days? You know, and obviously, I know you have no control over that, but-
Great editorial comment.
But, you know, I mean, if, if, you know, if it's a very low percentage across the state, I mean, at some point, somebody's gotta look at this and go, it doesn't make sense. You know, and we should shorten that up or, or change it or whatever, I would think, but I guess that would be common sense. Absolutely. That was, that was, that was, that was a foolish comment. Sorry.
Yeah, the other question I have is, is there any way that you can find out countywide what the cost was to have the in-person early voting for the nine days? Uh, I heard the number was really high, per, as a dollar amount per voter.
Right. I, I believe so. We can, I, you know, ask each clerk, because they're in charge of staffing that nine days. We need a minimum of, minimum of three inspectors there, nine days, and so they're running shifts, finding people that are willing to step up because the nine days wrap around two weekends, right? They start on a Saturday, a whole week, and then wrap around ending on, on the final Sunday. So, um, I think for February, I believe the city clerk did a little analysis and, you know, was figuring out it was three hundred plus dollars per voter that came. And so just for talking points, right? Um, the minimum days we have to offer is nine. Some jurisdictions have thirty days in the more urban areas. More staff, more location. I mean, we'll use, um, City of Lapeer precincts, for example. Um, they normally run their elections in two churches. Uh, they use the church space because it's easy for the folks getting the nada, parking, et cetera. So for nine days, it ties up a church for two Sundays, right? So, um, the City of Lapeer for the August primary, we just finished, moved their early voting to City Hall so that it would be more centralized. There, everybody's trying different, um, combinations to see what we can do to make it one voter-friendly, more accessible, because that's what this is all about, but also affordable and, and so on. So what I've done for February and for August, once settled on where all these sites are gonna be, put a publication in the newspaper about times of the day and locations, just as that extra help, I'm hoping, to the voters so they know if I, if I live in Deerfield Township, where do I go and what time are they open? So Deerfield Township, for instance, is a regional site, pick up many rural town, townships north and over to the east so that it tells then maybe a rich township resident, oh, I'm going into town in twenty-four, I'm gonna swoop into Deerfield Hall, I'm gonna vote and what time they're open. So I, I think we're so early on with this requirement. We're still figuring out what we can do uh, to make it afforded, more affordable and more accessible because the voters voted for it. I didn't, but somebody did in the past. So that, it's that balance. So it's an ongoing conversation.
Unfunded mail dates.
I had a question for you. You mentioned Deerfield and Emily are doing it jointly. I mean, this thing is so, in my opinion, ridiculously expensive per voter. Can we do more to encourage that where municipalities work together? To me, it's surprising that an individual township wants to do this from an economics standpoint, because they gotta pay these people for those nine days. Whereas I happen to vote in Deerfield, we had a number of townships, it's still a small number that even show up, but it's certainly more economic for those townships to divide that cost. Can we do more as a county to say, hey, why don't you folks work together and save some money?
It, it's an excellent suggestion, and when this came to, came into being that we needed to figure it out, we had a joint meeting, we, myself and all of the local clerks who were in office at that point, talking about it. What are we gonna do? Is, is it gonna be a central site at the county? What are we gonna do? And so, you know, initially, I thought that might be a good solution. We have a space situation. Where would we be open nine days? This building cannot unless we have lots of security here. So we were talking about that and some of the local clerks, but this was now eighteen months ago, had said, well, if my voters voted for it, I want them to come to their own neighborhood. But I think as we live with it, I think we're seeing a need to make some changes. So I'll get back with, after, you know, there's a timetable for clerks to notify the Bureau of Elections what they're doing with early voting. So now we're heading headlong into November. There'll be a timetable where they have to notify where's early voting gonna be and all of that. So I could have a mid-fall career on that very idea, and I'm definitely encouraging that.
Very good. Thank you.
So i- is there just two regional sites in the whole county, or is there more than just, more than two? Just two?
At this point, just the two. And just to share with you, the Emily City site picked up Goodland Township for this election because Goodland found, you know, they're on fifty-three rural, and they had hardly any voters, very expensive for that township to afford it. So they collaborated with the Emily clerk, who's wonderful to work with, and she's turned, have I not over? It's a programming issue too, uh, from the county side, to have the tabulators programmed to accept different jurisdictions ballots. But that has been working well also. So we're, we moved into another, adding a jurisdiction to that regional site for August. So I'm hopeful some of them are rural. Townships will be talking to their neighbors and still make it okay for their voters. I mean, we're, seriously, we're a pretty mobile society right now. You know, it's, most people could drive over to an adjoining township, in my opinion, to take that advantage of early voting if they want. I mean, there's already the opportunity to do AV voting, absentee voter, um, balloting that opens up, uh, the voting process to somebody that can't make it on Election Day. But that's another discussion. Thank you for that. I just have one other quick update and another, other part of clerk life. Um, this has to do with the circuit court. We have an enormous amount of money that's owed to the courts through the years for felony assessments that, um, just rolls along in the books. So we've, uh, now we, being my office, has taken over the collection process. And last fall did, um, tax intercepts, which is a whole process with, we can only do it at the state level that I'm aware of right now. So we have to send out notices to the person that owes, and then wrap around when we do the tax filings. We receive tax money, their tax money to pay their debt to the county. So I just wanna tell you the progress at this point. We expect more money to come in yet. So it's a over, overhead of six dollars a name that we owe to Lansing, as well as all the staff time and that it takes. But so far, as of today, we've gotten thirty-six thousand, two hundred, twenty-eight dollars, seventy-six cents to help pay really related and delinquent felony assessments. So that, I think, is a great win for the county. A lot of work, but-
That's, that's, that's gross.
Yeah. Yeah. And it, and when it comes to us, then it hits the defendant's case and it's distributed according to whatever the assessments were. So fines, cause, perhaps, um, court appointed attorney fees, perhaps restitution to a victim. So, um, it's a, it's a whole process for receiving that money in when we get it from Lansing. So, yeah. Give you an update from all this.
You said, you said you, we owe an astronomical amount of money. Do you have any idea roughly what that number is?
I do.
Okay.
It's like eight million dollars.
Oh, my.
And now that is for all times since, since the county started with their court system in nineteen ninety-four. Creates, that's when it went automated. Um, and so in that, that perhaps are our deceased defendants, probably a lot of incarcerated defendants. You know, the only way money comes there is if family members pay their prison accounts so they can buy stamps or whatever. So that's not a way we can collect. Um, so that's just an enormous number from all times.
Yeah. So is this the, is this the only way we're ever gonna go, like, get this money paid back? Like, through this process, or is there other?
Well, this is one process. Uh, we also have another process of, um, we're gathering the files, we're doing notices, we're doing wage assignments for those that are employed, we're doing show causes, so we actually bring these folks in. Uh, we do bench warrants. There's a, a whole realm of ways that we're also approaching this debt. But it's, the only person working, able to work on it in office is my secretary. So then her other duties wait, she's doing all of this, she has to go to court, she can't. Then some of the other staff, the chief deputies up in court, waiting for the defendant to be brought up from lockup, waiting for Judge, typically it's Judge Nolan, the circuit judge, to handle what, what are we gonna do with this from the wage assignment? You know, with that population, you don't always have people that are working and people that are, um, maybe fully transparent about their income. So, so it's a huge process, but we're around it.
Good. Well, thank you. Thank you.
Any questions before I give up the microphone? No. Okay. Thank you all.
Thanks. Any other department heads that would like to?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Joseph, Lapeer County, Front of the Court. I just wanted to bring to your attention that the Front of the Court has fully taken over establishment work with the mutual agreement of the prosecutor's office. Kayla Nelson has took over with Lucy Clark, who retired at the end of July. Uh, Ms. Nelson's a smart, self-starter individual, should do great in this position. We're excited to have her work for us to continue the establishment work. Last thing I wanna put on your radar is, um, the Front of the Court has traditionally had fairly good retention and people with multiple years of service. We're starting to have people into retirement, um, inter-office transfers, or, uh, move to the private sector. We've had three hires this year, two last year, and four in twenty-twenty-two. It's not a calamity or anything, but I just wanna bring it to your attention that it's something that we are talking with administration about. What can we do to continue to have people that retain, uh, service with the Front of the Court, so that they have this knowledge? So years down the road, we have people who have experienced in multiple roles so that you don't have to salute new people and don't have somebody else to look to to explain to them how to do the job. We discussed the possibility of, uh, getting all on one floor, because the Front of the Court is on two floors. That would make staffing more easy. You wouldn't have to get multiple coverage. So if somebody's out on the first floor, you don't have to juggle as much to get somebody from the second floor down there. Um, that could leave the possibility of having a smaller staff in the future. Certainly, once we have, um, digital filing, uh, that would help tremendously for the amount of staff we need and open up the possibility of different sort of flexible work options. We're not, uh, looking to go down that road yet. Uh, we're gonna wait, obviously, till the clerks get it, and then we will follow suit with a digital, uh, filing system that is compatible. But, uh, just wanna bring it to your attention and let you know that this will be an ongoing conversation. I know that this isn't something that's solely, uh, an issue for the Lapeer County Front of the Court, and certainly it's not one that's even reserved for just this county. I know multiple counties are having issues with retaining staff in the Front of the Court. Um, but I just wanna bring it to your attention.
Thank you.
Any questions? I'd try to entertain.
Are there any questions?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Are there any other department heads that would like to give an update this morning? Seeing none, that brings us to our first public time. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak this morning?
Good morning. I wasn't gonna talk, so I forgot my little paper. Um, I'm Rose Navarro from Attica Township, and I'm glad you brought up the voting, the early voting. Uh, Lapeer didn't need me as an election inspector, so I went to Gemacine. Lovely people, lovely working environment. I worked one day of early voting. We had the record in their precinct of thirty-eight, actually, in they do, everyone goes to the, the township of the, I think there's nine precincts. They all go there. Most of the people come in, are coming in to pay their taxes, and they're like, oh, I can vote. Oh, how convenient. So it, it, it's interesting. I just really find it to be a huge waste of money. I mean, when you sit there for eight hours and you have thirty, and we, we were the winners, and last time I did it too, uh, this was in February. Same thing. We were the winners. Had eleven people. Um, I, I just find it, I, I don't even know how the townships can justify doing it. It is an extreme waste of money. And again, absentee ballots, there's other ways to do it. I just think it's a huge, huge waste of money. So it's nice for those people who are like, woo-hoo, yay, I don't have to come in that next Tuesday, but it really is a lot of money. And if you look at, I think we had, um, five people usually running that day. Um, do the math, times nine days and then Election Day. I, I don't know how the townships are affording it. So, thank you very much.
I'm gonna be a little different today. I would like to thank Mr. Zender. I would like to thank Moses, and I would like to thank Mr. Bustles. They addressed an issue that I raised several meetings ago. And Moses gave me, he was courteous enough, he gave me a call and said, oh, my God, the information you gave us, thank you, and the matter has been addressed. Uh, now, I'm gonna ask that this board get together and offer a public apology to Ms. Huff and Mr. Adams. It seems that Judge Nolan has deemed the information somebody has been spreading to be false, frivolous, and for a political cause. The last meeting in this chambers, there was a gentleman, he again referred to Ms. Huff three different times as Ms. Huff and Puff. The last time, he stopped in the middle of puff, because I looked him directly in the eyes and he knew what he was saying. He seems to think he is the king of the county. He ordered Ms. Huff to stop posting things on her Facebook, specifically where he lived. And if this jackass genius had any common sense, he is a public figure. There's a little more latitude in question, comment, opinion, as long as you don't threaten him, as long as you don't entice anybody else to hurt him, and as long as you don't impede his day-to-day routine. Now, if he wants to scream about somebody posting where he lives, it's public record. It's in the county directory. Live with it. I have had people in my township call me on a Sunday night at eight-thirty, wanting me to speak to the local board on their behalf, and they were privately people. One gentleman would not even give me his name. He just kept telling me where he lived, and everybody was not involved. You know what? You have to suck it up when somebody calls you. Now, I know the board is not gonna publicly apologize, but maybe you should have a quiet talk with whoever is deemed by Judge Nolan to be spreading BS for a political cause. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Anyone else from the public would like to speak this morning?
Good morning. Uh, I'm here to introduce myself. My name is Beth Potter-Milton. Uh, and I will be on the ballot in November for District One Commissioner as a candidate running as an independent, no party affiliation. Um, I'm doing that because I served as a trustee on Mayfield Township Board for twenty years. Um, I'll complete that in November with the new trustees taking office. Um, I was a county employee for thirty-seven years and four months, retiring in June of twenty-twenty-two. My late husband was a deputy at Lapeer County Sheriff's Department and an enforcement officer of the Lapeer County Front of the Court. My role as a county employee, I was a caseworker for the Front of the Court, um, for a majority of the time of my employment. I graduated from the University of Michigan Flint, uh, with a degree in public administration and psychology. My role as a caseworker was dealing with parents going through the difficult, uh, task of divorcing or in a non-married situation, making recommendations to the court for custody and, uh, parenting type issues and child support issues. I think I can bring to the board a unique perspective, um, knowing that we all have different ideologies and beliefs and positions on things. But knowing that at times we have to compromise. I may not be entirely happy. I may not agree with Mr. Howell or Mr. Zender, but we can agree to disagree, treat each other respectfully as a board, our constituents, and then move on in our county business. Uh, I, I was raised in Lapeer County. My parents have lived their entire life in Lapeer County. I moved from one address on Haynes Road, four houses down, and I married to my grandparents' farmhouse. So I'm invested in the community. As a youth, I was involved in four-H, my church and a member of Saint Aloufr Church, taught Sunday School. I'm now launching great nieces and nephews in four-H, um, Botta Hogg and a Pin of Rabbits as a candidate for county commissioner at the recent Emily City Fair. So I'm invested in my community. I'm looking forward to, um, um, meeting people in Marathon Township, Deerfield Precinct Two, and my neighbors in Mayfield Precinct Three and One. So I'd just like to introduce myself. I will have, um, a website and a Facebook page in the next couple of weeks. And, um, any questions? I'll be around to answer any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carolyn, Marathon Township. I just remembered a couple. So the day of election, there was a couple of people that, um, messaged me. And the first one was at the polls at seven, because she was so excited to vote. And she said, the doors are locked, and they, um, it was like seven fifteen, the doors were still locked. And they finally knocked, and they said there was a computer problem. And so, um, that's, that was one instance on Election Day. And, and this is a person, we all, I think a lot of us feel very, the anxiety goes up when we go into, um, pass our vote, not because we don't know who we wanna vote for, but through the ye, the past few years, we, we don't know what we're gonna see when we, so for this woman to even go vote, I was so, I was proud of her. And then when she gets there and the doors are locked, and it, I don't know exactly when they were opened, but there's some sort of computer problem. And then I get another message after five o'clock, one of my young friends says, I don't see a second, where's this, you know, where's all the rest of the things, the, the villages and everything that I'm supposed to vote on? And unfortunately, I didn't get her message until like fifteen minutes, and then she, I get another message. She goes, oh, I found it. I flipped my paper over. Well, we had even noticed when we walked into our township that on the board where they always posted the ballots, they didn't have side one up and side two up. They only had side one up. Of, we have two precincts, so they had side one of one and side one of two. They didn't have both sides up. So she was a young voter, and she was, you know, and then she's, oh, she flipped it over, and she realized that the other, that everything was on the other side. But she was anxious. She was, you know, a new voter. And so, um, just a couple of things that, that kind of went to the, you know, the things that we don't talk about. And again, I, I feel like this nine days is just, you know, I think it is, it isn't common sense. We need to use common sense, and what we don't need, we get rid of. Um, and I also think that there's a lot of disenfranchising with voting. I think we have to look at the big picture. So, thank you. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak this morning during first public time? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to new business. And item number one is the MSU Extension Agriculture and Agribusiness Educators Program and Efforts Update.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Phil Kate. And I'm a resident of Lapeer County for quite a while now. And I represent Michigan State University Extension and the Agriculture and Agribusiness Institute. So we're here to give an update about the different programs and things that are involved with agriculture, not only here in our county, but across the entire state of Michigan. And I brought one of my colleagues to, to talk about some of this programming efforts and what's involved for a different part of agriculture that I, I normally don't talk about. And so I have my colleague Jerry Jaborik here to talk about livestock this morning. Would it, is there, sure. Then I'll, I'll follow up.
Okay. Well, thanks for allowing me to speak a little bit this morning. Like Phil said, uh, we work together in the Agribusiness Institute for Michigan State Extension. And um, I'm the Beef Lot Systems Educator for the state, working with Extension. So do general beef education as well, so part of the beef team for MSU Extension. So one of the things I decided I want to talk to you guys about today is one of the groups that the Animal Ag Team has. So like Phil said, livestock, I am primarily just beef, but together with the animal, other livestock species, um, we have a, a team called E-Rail. It's emergency response for accidents involving livestock. And um, recently, uh, this spring, we actually did a training here in Lapeer County in Emily City for our emergency responders or, or first responders that would possibly show up to an accident if there was on the roadway. So um, we had pretty good success. Um, this was our first training, I believe, or at least since I've joined the team, that was away from campus. So we're trying to spread out and actually to other parts of the state where maybe our, our first responders can't get that time off to travel and actually go attend one of our trainings on campus. So trying to broaden our reach a little bit to um, extend that education and training to them. And so uh, for that training, um, let's see here. Um, we had fifty-two individuals, I believe, that day. So that takes a pretty big team to bring animals, because we do hands-on demonstrations, working with some of the various livestock species. A lot of our first responders don't have livestock experience or working with large animals. So this gives them the opportunity to get a little experience, feel a little bit more comfortable in case uh, the situation arises where they have to go out there and round up some animals that may be in a pickup or trailer or something like that. So that was a pretty good success. We had some great feedback for that. The other thing that ties into that is I've been working with um, some of our emergency first responders within Lapeer to bring uh, E-Rail trailers. So MSU Extension, um, the E-Rail team has gotten funds to create these trailers that can be used to respond to these accidents. They're equipped with all kinds of equipment, um, whether it comes from fencing, paneling, uh, other animal handling equipment that may be necessary if the situation arises. So um, it, it's a really valuable tool. And anyways, uh, I've been working with um, the folks in Emily City to provide them a trailer. It's centrally located right off sixty-nine, can still um, reach vast part of the, the thumb. Um, and even, even south of the thumb, I would say. So it, it seemed like a wise decision, especially with the bridge to Canada. We get quite a few livestock that come in for processing. So um, that has been uh, one of the things that we've been working on. Other than that, um, I do, like I said, I, I do general beef education, working on the feedlot side of things, so cattle feeding, that's pretty big in the thumb. We have a lot of dairies that produce cattle. And as a result, those offspring, male offspring get fed out and raised for beef production. So I help provide a lot of education to our cattle feeder, cattle, cattle feeders across the state and particularly in this area. So with that, um, I'll let Phil talk. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer as well.
Thanks, Jerry. So I left a packet of information on your, with you. And in there, there are many impact statements. Now, when I say agriculture and agribusiness, it's more than just Phil Kate and Jerry Jaborik. There's a whole team of educators across the state of Michigan and in the thumb that provide educational opportunities for our residents and our citizens concerning agriculture. It could be in consumer horticulture. It could be in fruit or vegetables. It could be in equine. It could be in hogs. It could be in lot, cattle. And we also have a dairy educator that's working in this area. So we have a, a wide range of expertise that's available for all producers of all levels, whether they're the very best or the just beginners that are starting. And those are the people that are coming to us and asking questions. And we also make farm calls and go out and visit people on a regular basis. But there are programs that we actually provide in county for our residents. And one of the county uh, programs that I was able to participate in and lead was a pest, uh, I'm sorry, restricted-use pesticide training. And we had that in Mayfield Township Hall. That was last December. Every pesticide applicator that applies restricted-use pesticide is required by the state of Michigan to go through training and to be certified in order to apply any pesticides that are restricted. And so we provide the educational information for them to pass their core review. And then if it's a commercial applicator, they also have to pass additional training that is also uh, out there. So I was involved with that and we had a, a good group here. We had a fertility management training that was provided for our, our farmers. And primarily on the field crop side is where I work most of the time, so I'm giving you those. And so that was for the beginners. We're planning on following that up to have a advanced fertility management program for people that are interested. And that would be for agribusiness and for producers. We also have what I call the Crop and Pest Management Update. And that's more of a regional meeting, but it does provide our field crop producers with an opportunity to interact with our specialists and educators and ask questions after in-depth information is provided to them. It's an all-day training. And we normally have anywhere from uh, a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and seventy-five people that will participate in the two trainings that we have that are accessible here in the thumb. And then I'm going to say that there is a, I'm going to call it the flagship program for the Field Crops Team, the Virtual Breakfast Series. In fact, it's seven o'clock this morning. I posted that. And it's every Thursday morning during a growing season from March through September. And producers across the state are able to join online. Now, it's one hour long. And they have question and answer period, as well as information from our specialists on campus or across the state. And then a fifteen-minute weather update, which, if you think about it, every one of us talks about weather all the time. It affects us each and every day. And of course, this year, we're drowning in rain, but um, we do the best that we can. But with that, just alone in that particular program, we've had a hundred and eighty-one participants from Lapeer County. And that's a good reach. Each and every week, we have residents that will attend and participate. And so I look at that as an opportunity for them to gain real-time, relevant information on programming and information that they need to do their jobs better. And that's produce food and fiber for us as a county, as a state, and as a nation. So I, I think that's a real big plus. And that has widespread recognition and support from not only Michigan residents. We have normally upwards of twenty states are represented in that program, as well as upwards of fifteen different countries have participated in that country. So it has a very broad reach and good connection with people across the world, I'll say. So there's, there's one thing that, that I haven't touched on. And I, I do want to, before I go into that, I want to say that as I look through these impact statements, agriculture is so important for us as a community and a county and as a state. It's over a hundred and four billion dollars worth of economic impact for our state in general. Because we are the second most diverse country or state in the nation. And Michigan has so many different crops and so many different things that are produced that it, it's tremendous impact for us uh, in the state of Michigan. But here's one that I, I thought was interesting. And you didn't know that there's three-point-eight-five million honeybees in Michigan. And what do we do without honeybees? Well, we don't get much food, I'll tell you that. And our pollinators are very critical for us. And we have an educator that is working in this across the state of Michigan. And I've had the opportunity to have her uh, join me in different things. So we have a wide reach, let me put it that way. But the last thing that I want to talk about today is I always talk about farm safety on it when I do a phone call. But when I talk to somebody on the phone, it's so important. And one of the reasons why I say that is because just last week, I read an article about a twenty-three-year-old that was sucked into a hay baler, a round baler. I've been just the people that have been killed. So I talk about farm safety everywhere. And it's important. I don't see that in other program areas. I don't see that in agribusiness. I don't see it with other people that are out there working with agriculture. It's a pain. Jerry's seen it too. I see it on a regular basis. Because I review these, what I call my face program reports of people that are killed. And I work with forages, so this one is going to hit me. But I want to say that I'm going to write an article on this. And I'm going to say, what's the cost of improving your forage baling equipment? So Round Balers about ten years ago went through a transformation. And I don't say it's a, it's a huge transformation. But what the companies did is they now have shut-offs so that a farmer can't go into the baler without shutting it off or closing it off. This twenty-three-year-old had everything running. They found the tractor running and the PTO shaft running. And the baler was in full operation when they found him wrapped up in a baler. It was gruesome. But I'm going to write an article and say, what's the cost of farm safety? What's the cost of updating your equipment? Is it worth your son or daughter or your farm worker? And I've been on calls where people have been killed before. So those are some of the things that Extension does that people rarely see or interact with. But it's important. So with that, I'll stop because I just need to.
Well, I hope that when you do write that article, being that you're a Lapeer County resident, you'll submit it to the local newspapers here in Lapeer.
Last week ago, it, it's going to actually be written for a national publication. I've already talked with the editor and he says, I think that's a great idea, Phil. So I will ensure that it goes to our Lapeer County Press. It was not a Lapeer County resident, but I don't really care about that because we have round balers in this county all over the place. And they're not new. They're over ten years old. And I know they don't have that safety equipment on them. You can't retrofit. You can't. It's not feasible. But anyway, any questions or concerns for many of the Commissioners today on, on the MSU Extension Agriculture and Agribusiness Institute?
I got one for you, Phil.
Sure.
I remember years ago, and I, I don't know who actually put it on, but they actually had some farm safety, like hands-on kind of thing. I believe it was down at the fairgrounds.
I did it.
You did it?
Yep.
Okay.
In conjunction with some other supporters, Rick Zine, who is part of the fire department in Emily City, and also um, Phyllis Brown. It was the three of us that really spearheaded that effort.
Is, is, is that something that you guys are considering doing again? Or is it, was it, was it not well-attended? Was it well-attended?
It was not well-attended. I, and how many times can you see that before uh, all of, it falls on deaf ears? Now, understandably, uh, we had a tragic accident in the county that spearheaded that. And it was a young boy, fourteen years old, that got caught in the PTO shaft. And he wrapped around that shaft about eight or nine times before it's rolled. And it was Caleb Harsh was his name. He was, he didn't die, but he was really beat up. Broken bones all over the place. And it spearheaded that effort for, I'm, I'm going to say probably five or six years that we did some of that safety equipment demonstration. And we had it through the grandstands one year with the tractor rollover too. So we have done that. And it's something that I'm sure could be replicated, but it's not easy to do. It is not easy to do. Any other questions? Comments? Thank you so much for your time, Commissioners. Uh, read through those impact statements and I think you'll be surprised. All right, thank you.
Phil Green.
Thanks, Phil. All right, that brings us to uh, item number two. Cheryl Clark, the Kind Executive Director, has a request to renew service funding for the Kind Kids in New Directions School to Career Presentation Program in the amount of eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
Good morning, thank you. Um, yes, just a little bit of history on the Kind program. Um, it started when I first became a county commissioner. Judge Friesel and I were walking down the hall and he said, if we get these kids in elementary before they get appropriate court, it'd be better for everybody. And I said, be right, let's start it. And so we started the program. And then twenty-three years ago, the director who was full-time left and the secretary who was part-time left. And we couldn't make payroll and they were going to shut the program down. And I said, it's too important, it's too valuable. I'll take it for six months and get it back on its feet. So that was twenty-three years ago. We are back on our feet. We've served twenty-three families that first year and now we're serving about two-hundred-and-fifty families. Probably more than that if you count the MSU program, which is man's etiquette of social skills. But the one thing that we looked at is, it seemed like we had a lot of high school dropouts for our county. And so how could we work with that to, to keep them from dropping out? So we created the program to go into high schools five hours a week and the junior, junior high five hours a week to help us keep the kids in school. And it's been very, very successful. I think in your packet, you should have letters from a lot of the schools. And um, our success rate. We did, this year, we had two girls at the school that were not graduating. And we were able to help them and get them to graduate. The one is at Michigan Works trying to get into college or a training school. So we can go a little bit farther than the schools can. We can go into their homes. We can work with their parents. We can work with their kids. We can help them if they're homeless. We do everything. So it's, it's been a very great program. If we can save one kid or keep one kid from graduating, keep one kid off the social services pay, you know, system, it, it helps everybody. So um, we served um, over a hundred families through the junior high and the high school program this year. And uh, so that's kind of it in a nutshell. Do you have any questions?
Where, where does the rest of your funding come from?
Um, it's kind of a mix we have um, with each, each program. The supervised visits, we, you'll have a access grant coming up after me. That's from Friend of the Court. We had twenty-five hundred this year, just another fifteen hundred. Most of that is self-paid. All um, the parents have to pay to come and see our, to our program. We give the grant that helps a little bit. What we serve, um, I should have counted, but. What we serve, I should have counted, but we have about forty supervised visits this year that's coming through. So if, the other thing is, there's not a lot of people that do supervised visits anymore. So this year, we did Clare County, LaCombe, St. Clair, Cascola, Oakland, Genesee, and Lapeer. So people are coming from all over to do this program. But that program helps pay for our other programs. The KIND program, which is the main program working with kindergarten through eighth grade. The county provides twenty thousand dollars funding through the Childcare Fund for that. And then we have a contract with CMH that if they have general fund money left, then they help pay for that program. That's a program that we're always short on and we always have to dip into our savings to provide funding for that. The MESS program, which is Man's Etiquette and Social Skills, that started out as a ten-week program. The schools said, oh, my gosh, this is so good, can you do another ten weeks or can you go through the end of the year? So now we do twenty weeks. And we do third, fourth, and fifth, and we're looking at start doing kindergarten through fifth grade on that. And the schools pay for that. The high school program, the schools help pay for that. And United Way usually has funding from, we get funding for that from them. And then the KIND provides some Kind funding. The mentoring program and the suspension program are all through appropriate court. So I'm always looking for grants and funding. This year, I think the last three years, we were able to write a grant for hamburger for the food pantries. And my Steve Zott, the superintendent, said, I think we're in the hamburger business. I said, because we can, because our clients go to the food pantry, when they don't have food to give them, then, then they don't get food. So we work real hard to try and see all aspects. And so I wrote the grant for, we got seventeen hundred pounds of hamburger three times for the food pantry, for seventeen different food pantries. So I try to work outside the box and when there's a need, then I try to figure out where I can fill it.
Okay, thank you.
And Chelsea, she's mentioned a lot in there. Kelly did retire. She was on medical leave for a year and she wasn't able to come back. And Chelsea is mentioned in there. She's been, she, you know, her and Kelly both were just awesome. All my key words are, you know, I, I create the ideas and the programs, but they, the ones that I do in the boots on the ground, in the schools and the homes. And they are tremendous. So, but she can be just as helpful if you want.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, at the moment, we're just talking about the School to Career Program. So I'm going to move the purchase of service from Lapeer County pine, KIND, for the School to Career Program for junior and senior high schools in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred, which we've already budgeted.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Cheryl, thanks for what you do.
If you're going to have any questions or want to see what we do, we still appreciate it. We are going to be moving to the I D C move. We have room for us, so it looks like we're going to have to rent, which is going to dip into our budget. But we're still trying to see if we can find someplace. But we are working hard on that to find this space. We've contacted churches and everybody trying to get some more space as soon as possible. Anything we spend on rent is going to take away from kids. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to item number three. We have the prosecuting attorney request to accept, the acceptance of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five Crime Victim Rights Grant.
I'll move it. Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion passes. And now it brings us to item number fi- uh, four. The friend of the court has a request to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-four access and visitation contract, First Amendment.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
I have a request authorization of First Amendment to this contract if we add additional fifteen hundred dollars. As Ms. Clark indicated, this program permits individuals who have subject backgrounds or substance abuse issues an opportunity to have parent time under control and safe environment with their children. It's mostly benefit for the children. But we request that this be authorized.
Move it. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion or any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion passes.
Just wanted to say thank you for being here in case we had any questions.
Yes, thank you.
It has no end.
Okay, item number six. We have the treasurer request to authorize payment to BSNA for the annual service slash support fee for the assessing program. Did I skip, oh, I'm sorry, Health Department, I'm so sorry. We have the Health Department here. Request to approve of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five fee schedule.
I'm leaving here if you have questions.
Kathy, how did you come up with the numbers for the increases?
It's been five years since we increased anything. And at that point, we did just a few. Kathy and I talked about it, it was time to look at them. And we've had quite a few increases in salary here in, in my department as well as through the county. And this is just trying to, a lot of us trying to offset some of that fee per service. So I looked at each individual one. Number one, how many of those services we complete? Number two, where we can make the most impact in our, in our budget and trying to overcome some sort of costs.
And how does this compare to other counties, you know, surrounding us? Is this?
It's really difficult. I, they're comparable, I'll say that overall. Some counties get a lot more general fund help from their county and their fees are a little bit lower. But those that don't, some are higher, some are, some are lower. And we have some fee, in our fee structure, we have some that other counties don't. So then I have to sit and compare apples to apples for each, each county. So it's a pretty, pretty lengthy process. But I, I feel like we're, we're right there.
I'll move it. Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Just a commentary, I'm, I'm going to vote yes on it. But I just want to make the point, there are so many unintended consequences of governmental decisions. And the commission previously granted very generous pay increases, which are always attractive to do. But we always want to think, what does that mean for the pension costs because of that increased expense? What does it mean for the practicality? What kind of fees have got to be charged? So I just urge everybody to be very careful about our financial decisions because there are tails on them. This is one of them. Not critical to you, it's nothing you've done, but it's part of the overall inflationary world we live in right now.
Well, and, and if I can comment on that, Gary, because I was part of that. Our folks here that work for Lapeer County were extremely underpaid compared to, you know, other, other, other counties, other public entities and stuff like that. I mean, that, that wage study should have been done, you know, a, a long time ago. So, you know, I, I, I appreciate what you're saying and I totally agree with you that we have to be careful. But we also have to pay our, our people appropriately. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you both for being here, it is noted.
Okay, that brings us to item number six now. The treasurer, request to authorize payment of the BN, BSNA for the annual service slash support fee for the assessment program, assessing program.
I'll move it. Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes.
I have a comment on this one.
Yeah.
I'm going to vote for it certainly. But it's very appreciated when representatives of the departments come before the commission. This is the second one today, where we approved something on faith, but there's nobody here to explain it. I greatly appreciate the Health Department and the other departments that have in fact shown up and explained the request.
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to wait till Commissioner comments, but since you brought it up, that's why I'm thanking those that are taking the time to be here. I think we're a pretty generous board. I, you know, all we want is the same respect back to the, the different departments. And if we do have a question or a comment, it would be nice to have somebody from the department here to answer those questions or comments.
Yes.
So take, take notice who's showing up and who's not, that's all I'm going to say.
Notice taken. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that passes. Brings us to item number seven, mental health. Item number A has a request to approve fiscal, the, the final fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four appropriation transfer. Morning.
Good morning.
I'll move the, are you looking just for seven A right now?
Yep.
Okay, I'll, I'll move seven A. I'll support it.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to seven B. A request to approve the annual renewal of Square Nine program, software program.
What if this is, we have to, like, obviously, the whole, there are items that, so the new fiscal year comes in, we're starting to get invoices for, um, payment for programs that we have been using. So specifically what Square Nine is, is our filing software that we use for all of our bills. So we've had this system in place since fiscal year eighteen. So that's when we had switched to electronic storage rather than filing all of those invoices level placements. So they store all payments and checks and keep track of it that way.
I'll move approval of the Square Nine software program renewal.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that brings us to seven C. Request to approve the annual renewal for the AccountMate software program.
Similar to that with the kind of work introduction with Square Nine, this one actually, this one that we entered in was, is in which we create the cover sheet that we send then down to the county. This program, AccountMate, will also produce reports for auditing, this is a kind of breakdown, which is, um, will based on the accounts and the program that we come from. Scores all of it. This one actually breaks it down and uses cover sheet reports, so you can send out to the county.
This is an annual, every year annual?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll move it. Support.
This has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on this? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that brings us to seven D. A request to approve the annual renewal for the balance assurance subscription.
So what this system does is, the majority of the services that we provide at CMH have to have professional licensers attached to it. So we have to make sure that we have all people's license are current and up to date as well as there's no violations to that. So this program will go through and run, we initially put in every single one of our staff with their credentials and their license numbers. And it runs a month that report, so that we can check and make sure everybody is valid to provide the service that they are doing. And there's no violations on their licensers. Which is a crucial requirement of services that we provide.
I'll move it. Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? So I have a question. You said this is a, every month it does this to the, all the people that are in the system, right? Correct? Okay, oh, this is just the staff.
It's just the staff, correct. Yeah, so all our staff that require this insurance to provide this service for masters level, any of our prescribers.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that brings us to item seven E. And that is a request to authorize payment to Family Building Company for completed repairs at the Harmony Hall Clubhouse.
Yeah, can you, I guess, John, can you, can you help with this? Because what is, what is this all about? I mean, was there, was there bids on it? Was there?
There was not, so there was misunderstanding, the education included an hourly rate for family building. Lauren said there was approval. We went back to look, there was not approval. That was back when Lauren was here, so he was working at an hourly rate. And I know he tore some wood off. They called me and said that they need more wood. And I proved that because they couldn't leave a bare building. But this all started with a duck, they were at an hourly rate approved by the commissioner, which there was not.
I never remember anything about this at all.
I don't think you have a front of you. Their board approved it. I went back to check the paperwork, their board approved it. It didn't make it to the progress meeting, just so you know. So it didn't even make it to you guys. But it was misunderstood, it, it was approved, that's what they did. So that's how this ended up being. So they did some work for an hourly rate. They did the work and, well, they got to be paid.
The, the quote for the hourly rate originally, yes, was to repair some damage, wood on the outside of the window frame, which the original quote came under, like seven hundred dollars for the work and the, for the labor and the material. Then when they got into it, turned into.
So the, yeah, so the salt, the salt ate up all, it has stone on it, it ate up all the mortar and stuff out of the stone. There was a lot of rotten wood that had to be replaced. And it was bad.
Don't disagree with that, but how would we go from a seven hundred dollar quote to a eighty, eighty-four hundred dollar quote with, with nobody having any idea that that was, you know?
Actually, that whole entire quote is not just for Harmony Hall. So again, going on to the statement that John had made about the understanding that there was approval for the hourly rate for family building. For some services that were, we obviously would still utilize the county for some things. But as it become available for them to provide the service, we would then utilize family building. So part of that total, forty-six hundred, as you see the invoice is attached, forty-six hundred approximately, is for the rotten repairs that were required to the front of Harmony Hall. And then we had two other items that interfered with safety for persons served at the main building. And so there was issues to repair for exhaust fans. And then anybody has been to our building where we have the gym, there's two large doors that enter the gym. They were swinging out into the hallway, which we were having to interview the staff and persons served as. When you were coming out of the gym and walking in public, you can't see out. And you swung the door open, they were hitting people. So we had, the doors were reversed, so they would swing inside of the gym. So the total cost of that, the hundred dollars includes those three items for family building.
The, excuse me, the exhaust fan, it says two additional duckworks, so that was a replacement, that was additional? I mean, who? The, excuse me, the exhaust fans, it says two additional, the ductwork, so that was a replacement, that was additional, I mean, who makes these decisions on things, items like that?
There was no exhaust fan, it was rest, there was no exhaust fan from the restroom at all.
Been like that for?
Honestly, spell didn't go away, we had to have a exhaust fan.
Yeah, makes sense, I just didn't know if they're added in addition to what's there already, because they're supposed to have.
It was not in there. Correct. I mean, I think they did the work, I think they did pay, but I think we're working this out on.
Correct. Yes, so, moving forward, we want to get family building paid for the services that were done, and then, obviously, all services, like, the use of their service has been stopped until we have further discussion and approval.
Yeah, we have a, um, a, like, meeting scheduled next week for me, Brooke, John, and Jackie. And what we're gonna do is talk about what is the procedure over at CMH now, if they have an emergency situation, how is determined that it's an emergency, if something has to be spent? How does building grounds get looped in and make that determination if it's an emergency, make a determination if they can handle it, or if we have a broken outside source? So we're gonna get together, put together some kind of system that we're sorry, wanting to propose it to the board, so. Uh, this kind of, like, they're saying just happened, Brooke is doing it down, there was certain things that, um, were in place that were assumed and, um, we're, we're, we're gonna get it resolved. So, like, to Kevin's question, well, who makes these decisions? So we're gonna work that out so that those decisions are made at first by the building and grounds department.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll make the motion to, to do it this time, but not thrilled with it.
Okay, it's been moved, is there any support?
I'll support it.
It's been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, that brings us down to, um, item number eight A, request authorization to pay the Kelly Firm for corporate, Corporation Counsel Legal Services through June thirty-first, or thirtieth?
I'll move that for two thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents to Kelly Firm.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, is there any discussion?
So... Are we, are we reaching out to the Kelly Firm, um, on maybe things that we shouldn't be? And I don't know. I see some of the stuff that's on here, I mean, like, elections, it's five hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents. What is that about? What questions are we asking, is this a, a question the clerk had, or who had this question?
So, this came without putting out names, so we had a situation where the county was asked, um, about the election clause, and someone was making a certain claim. And we talked between ourselves, we were unsure how to respond to the claim, so we deferred it to the Kelly Firm, I can give you more information about it, but it was, uh, something we just didn't feel safe giving what we thought was the obvious answer.
Okay, that's fine, I, I'm just curious where these, where these numbers are coming from, and like, they, I think, and, and this is, this is all going through you?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything that's on, on these bills, it, it goes through me.
Okay. Was there a motion to?
Yeah, it's been moved and supported.
Okay.
So is there any more discussion? Um, is this a roll, roll call? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, brings us to item number eight B, a request authorization to pay Shiftman Fournier for labor services through July thirty-first.
I'll move that we pay the bill to Shiftman Fournier for labor legal advice.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, brings us to item number eight C, request authorization to pay the Michigan Association of Counties annual dues for fiscal year twenty-four through twenty-five.
I'll move it. Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to item number eight D, a request to approve proposed budget amendment.
I'll move it. Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item number eight D, or, I'm sorry, eight E, the planning PA one sixteen application for Elmont Township.
I'll move it. Support.
Okay, that's been moved and supported, is there any discussion on this?
Just a comment, I'm certainly supportive of these programs. These folks may find problems to get the state of Michigan, because the standard is you gotta be forty acres, or else you've gotta demonstrate a certain amount of production per acre. It's only a two acre request, and they're trying to amend an existing agreement. Like I say, I'll vote for it to encourage it, but they may run into tough sledding at the state of Michigan when they review it. I've done a lot of these programs behalf of farmers, that's why I have a little bit of knowledge of it, and it's, there's a lot of bureaucratic requirements involved in the program.
Okay, is this been moved and supported? Right, yes, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, moving to eight, item number eight F, a request to adopt the resolution authorizing entry, a participation agreement in the Kroger National Prescription Opioid Litigation.
I'll give the board a little bit of background on this, so the national opioid settlement, um, there are different pharmaceutical producers and distributors, um, are part of the national settlement, and they're plenty to, uh, states, and then the center part of that one goes to local governments as well. Um, each, um, entity, whether it's a major pharmaceutical company or distributor, even a small one like, let's say Kroger, in this case, have different processes on how we could, um, lay claim to the settlement amount of money that's been sanctioned for the Lapeer County. So in this case, it's a hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars, two sixty-two cents, and this resolution is basically a formality, legal formality about saying that we will accept the funds for the opioid settlement.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions? I'll move it. Yep.
I was just curious, so we get a hundred and sixty thousand and change, does that have to be explicitly spent in a particular program?
Yes, yes, there's a, there's actually like, what we can spend the money on, what is, uh, qualifying expense or service.
And we do have a opioid task force that meets over at CMH, who is spearheading it, and we have a representative from the Sheriff's Department, City of Lapeer. Administrator Zanzoz on it, I'm on it, we have community leaders. Brooke is on it, thankfully. And I will support Kevin's, uh, motion.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, any further discussion on that?
Sorry, Commissioner Nysley, I apologize.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that brings us to old business, item number nine, draft properties motion to approve the license agreement for the replacement of an art board at the Historic Courthouse, referred from the seven twenty-five twenty-four full board with authority to act.
Yes, I, I have one question on this, is, are you on board with this, buildings and grounds? Is everybody good with what, what they're, what they're doing? I know there was some concerns of placement and pictures for weddings and all that, has that been a thrust?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, I think we'll go with it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be movable, it's not gonna be secured, um, because I do know that we have maintenance and stuff going on inside the courthouse potentially, so, um, they work with the city, uh, making it something that's gonna be, should be moved around.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move it.
Okay, it's been moved, moved, is there any support?
Support.
It's been supported, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that brings us to item number ten, the draft art promotion to approve the replacement of the complex generator enclosure of the underground tank, referred to from the seven twenty-five twenty-four full board.
I'll, I'll move it. Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, is there any discussion?
I have one question regarding this, in the contract with this, what happens to the old generator?
I don't wanna auction it off.
Okay, so we, we are, it is spelled out in there that we retain ownership of it as far as, are they, they, are they removing it, or are we removing it?
They are just unhooking all the fuel lines and stuff like that, they are not moving it, it's staying in the basement. My goal is to auction it off, and whoever compies it, and get it out of the basement, there's a big room where we can get out, and it'll have to be drug out, onto the ramp, and put it up on a flatbed or something. And I tell you, I already had a caller say, I hear your, because we just had some maintenance done on that, we can't get parts for it. And somebody said, I hear, actually, it's the maintenance guy, because you can't get parts for it, the guy has that engine, and he'd like to have it for parts, um, so, Art had a call, and I said, we have to go to auction, so.
So, so we are retaining ownership of it, and whatever, and then we'll sell it?
Yes.
According to county, county, uh, process?
The underground tank is, is a big reason too, to get rid of this, to get this generator, that's why I wanna move it outside, so we have this underground tank. It costs us a fortune to keep this underground tank, and it's nineteen eighty, and really, we have a leak control, it gonna cost us a fortune.
Sure. Okay.
Do the, um, the annual testing for the underground tank and all that, we're going with an above-ground tank now. Uh, but, uh, is there a life expectancy of fuel that may not be used in the tank? Uh, I, I've talked to a friend of mine, he's a farmer, so that diesel fuel doesn't last forever.
Right.
And if it doesn't run, it needs to be drained out and replaced, you know anything about that?
It, it, it will run once a week, like, like we do this.
Well, yeah, I know, but the fuel that's remains in the tank, you know, if it doesn't get used, I don't know.
We have several generators of diesel, we haven't had a problem yet, and I have not treated or anything, we made sure there's a treatment for it, but.
Right.
But we haven't run into an issue yet.
Well, they would be added to every, so often, whatever period of time that is, because, I mean, even just running once a week for whatever the time is that they run, I mean, it's gonna use some fuel, so, I would imagine at least once or twice a year, they're topping off the tank.
Yep, same way at the jail.
Yeah.
We had it, well, if it's like here, we have to add fuel.
Very good. Has this been moved and supported?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that brings us down to, we don't have any additional items, uh, other business, the next public time, or second public time, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak during the second public time?
Just so everybody knows, if there's a few of us out there that are paying attention, a couple meetings ago, there was a vote taken to remove Mr. Lawson's from the vetting board. And there was a comment made, and a call had been made to him, and there was a message that he was not accepting calls at that time. Now, I dealt with Mr. Lawson a year, a couple years ago, and I received the same message when I tried to contact him, I left a number, and within a day or so, he got back to me. My issue was with the veterans exception on property tax, and he met with me, we discussed it, and at the time, I didn't know he was that, didn't know he had been injured in service, but he was very receptive to me. Like I say, we just, we discussed it at Brian's, a couple that was sitting in the next booth was listening to the conversations and actually picked up our tab, said it was nice that somebody was paying attention. Now, my question is, I have heard people complain about different boards, board members not showing up. Uh, I'm wondering why it was so quick and public to remove Mr. Lawson, but people on mental health boards and this and that, people that voted a seventeen percent raise, nobody seems to have been removed unless it was done privately. I'm just wondering what's going on, is it another political agenda?
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak during the second public time? Okay, we will close the second public time, and we're moving on to commissioner reports. Start with Mr. Howell.
Okay. I'll be happy to lead off, and I think first I gotta respond to the last comment. Since I made that motion to remove Mr. Lawson, there's a lot more to it. The veterans board, the veterans themselves unanimously moved to remove him from the board, because he had not attended a meeting in almost nine months. Not only he had not attended, he refused to respond to letters, he refused to respond to phone calls, he refused to respond to texts, they even sent him a letter offering a voluntary resign, which he never returned. So the board had no choice. We need five active veterans on these boards, and if he was unwilling to participate, we had to remove him, and we will now appoint somebody who will be recommended collectively by the various American Legion and Veterans of Foreign War posts. So, it was absolutely not political, it was non-performance. And, and you're not, you're not up, sir, you're not up. I'm simply having to clarify the record, which I wasn't going to do, uh, but I think I needed to to make an explanation. Okay, moving on to positive things. I want to thank Commissioner Nysley for finding replacements for me for the meetings two weeks ago, so I could attend the livestock auction at the fairgrounds. It was a great experience, as Mr. Zander is well aware, with the fair, with the four H kids, the FFA kids, the independent kids who worked their hearts out, raised these animals, and hopefully get a premium, uh, on that. And I think the, as far as I could see, as a bidder, the prices went pretty well for the young people, they, uh, they, they should have made money. Secondly, tonight, uh, out at the lightning rounds, the youth livestock project folks are doing a farm-to-table dinner. The dinner will, as the name implies, involve, uh, beef and other livestock products raised here in Lapeer County, uh, vegetables raised here in Lapeer County. Uh, so it does twofold thing, one, it encourages local agriculture, and the second, it's a fundraiser for youth livestock programs in the county. That's at five-thirty tonight, so that's my report, thank you much.
Yes, last night, Commissioner Hamilton and I attended the CMH strategic planning, uh, meeting, very productive. Uh, I just want, I bring that up to, uh, talk about the wage study, I agree with you, there is plus and minuses to everything. But when they did the strategic planning, what, three years ago now, one of the things that they put in there was staffing. And since the wage study, we actually were able to take that completely out, because we are no longer the training grounds for the rest of the state of Michigan, is that fair to say, Brooke? So we're keeping our own, uh, here in, in Lapeer, but I agree with you, I don't even wanna check my 401K right now, it's taking a shellacking this week. Um, so I agree, we do need to be sound looking forward at our budget and how we're, we're gonna go about that. And then lastly, obviously, Tuesday was a low voter turnout, but contrary to popular belief, every vote does count and does matter. For an example, register of deeds, it was decided by a hundred and eighty-four votes. In the township that Commissioner Nysley and I share, the supervisor's position was settled by twenty-nine votes. So your vote absolutely does count, it does matter, and I just wanted to bring that point up. Thank you.
Very, very good point, and, uh, and again, on the four H program, I think it's an awesome program, and I hope it prospers and moves forward and grows, uh, because that's good for our community, it's good for the kids, and I'm very happy to see and hear that, uh, the things about that coming from you, Commissioner Howell, thank you.
I'm very happy to see and hear the, the things about that come from you, Commissioner Howell, thank you. Uh, I, I just want to offer congratulations to a couple candidates who are in the room, Greg, for your victory, uh, you'll be on our commissioner, and we look forward to working with you, and Bill, you put in a good fight, and it was close, you talked a hundred and two votes between you two. So you guys worked your butts off, and uh, you know, and uh, you know, one of the disappointing things about the whole voter thing, you know, we had a twenty-six percent turnout, in twenty-twenty, it was thirty-seven percent. You know, that's a, that's a, that's a sad testament on, on, on people's willingness to go out, those who, those who uh, uh, who don't vote are gonna be ruled by those who don't vote, you know, so, you know, it does make a difference, and I hope that that changes here in November. Um, but uh, you know, the uh problem uh that I see also is uh, you know, Teresa might wanna verify these numbers here, but I'm hearing that we have seventy-three thousand roughly registered voters in Lapeer County, a county of eighty-eight thousand five hundred roughly. I, that's impossible, that you have that many registered voters, I know that people get taken off the list, it goes back to Lansing, and Benson puts them right back on the QVF, and they come back, and I know that happens in Metamora, you know, Susan Clark will probably verify that up there, because I have a good friend of mine, his wife, ex-wife of thirty-five years ago, still shows up on the, on the qualified voter file after she's taken off. And his daughter, who lives in Houston, for the last ten years is married, uh, you know, and his wi- ex-wife lives in Arkansas, by the way, and is remarried, been remarried for twen- different, now last name for twenty-five years, so. It's, it just stinks, you know, that we still have to deal with this, um, and um, you know, that's pretty much all I have to say, and I thank everybody for coming out today.
Yeah, I would like to say thanks for everyone for coming out too, and uh, one thing that I have going on in, that is going on over in my district, is the Summer Fest in Emily City this weekend, so I encourage everybody to come on out, uh, there's gonna be a parade on Saturday. And should be a good time, fireworks Saturday night?
Friday night.
Friday night, fireworks, come out both nights, and you won't miss it. So, um, other than that, uh, yeah, I, I think the fair was a good, I'm sure Commissioner Zender will give a good update on the fair, but I think it was a good turnout, and it's beautiful weather, nice week for the fair, so. Anyways, I hope everyone has a good rest of your weekend, good weekend.
Um, fair went awesome, uh, really no, no problems over there. In the, the state of Michigan, um, there's a lot of festivals, um, especially in the, the cities that have had problems with uh young, young people, um, wanting to disrupt uh things and, and film for TikTok or YouTube or something, I don't know. And causing a lot of problems, but um, we, we had zero problems, uh, you know, of course, the, thanks to the sheriff's department and Emily City, uh, the state police. And I'm sure it helps that, that we're all fenced in too, so um, makes it a little, little harder to, to get away with some of the shenanigans. But the, the fair had great turnout, great weather, um, Thursday, we actually had a record day for, for a Thursday, um, we'd beat previous records, so um. Tuesday, but uh, uh, at least in, in, in our community, um, we had a supervisor that, that was not rerunning, so we got a new supervisor, we had five candidates for trustees in only four positions. We had our, our clerk had uh, there's two people running for that position, so it was a, it was an interesting day. And, you know, thank the, all the candidates, you know, anybody who, who runs for, for office, whether you win or lose. They put a lot of effort, a lot of heart into, to doing that, and, you know, certainly appreciate the, the efforts, and willing to put your, your, your neck out there, and uh. The EMS mileage went, went really well, uh, for EMS. I'm glad the voters got to decide what, what they wanted. So, with that, everybody have a great, safe weekend. Bill?
I just want to thank everybody for their support, I unfortunately did not win the election on Tuesday, uh, so this uh, coming the end of December, it'll be the end of my uh time here, uh, but plan on staying involved, so we'll be around. As far as the wages go, I mean, unfortunately, the increased cost with increased wages kinda does have some unfortunate side effects, but uh, it has made the county a lot more competitive. Attracting people to come here to wanna stay and work rather than just put their time in to be able to go somewhere else, and uh, hopefully uh, keeps people around for a long time, and keeps the things stable, and prevents a lot of churn and turnover, so. Um, it's got some pros and cons, but uh, can't keep paying low wages, especially in an economy like this, where costs just are out of control on a lot of things, so. Again, just want to thank everybody for this, for their support, and uh, congratulations to Greg on the victory, and uh, thank you.
All right, I just like to clarify one thing, did you, did you say Commissioner Zender that Thursday at the fair was the record?
For Thursday.
Record for Thursday?
Yes, so, we, we, we keep track of, of days, um, and Thursday was, was the best Thursday that, that we've ever had.
I just wanted to point out that that is the day that my fa- my wife and my whole family went there, so.
So, so Thur- 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 Thursday was our, was our trailer race uh in our grandstands, and if you haven't seen it, go to YouTube and watch it, it is hilarious. Um, and that event has really come around, um, people, I, I, the grandstands were full. For a Thursday, that's, that's pretty impressive.
Good.
So.
Okay, well, moving on to administration, administration of CFO updates, is there any updates, nothing? All right, um, there's no.
Motion adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.